Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting of June 22, 2020. This meeting is being recorded. Is anyone else recording the meeting? If so, please announce yourself for the minutes. Hearing none. We have a public hearing from Mass Electric, DBA National Grid, or Underground Electrical Conduit Location, West Tech Drive. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich. Is there a second? Okay. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the chairman votes yes. The meeting is open. It's my understanding we have a representative from National Grid on the line. If you would announce yourself for the record and just give us a brief overview of what you're trying to do, please.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if we have a representative from National Grid on at this time.
Oh, okay. Well, then, is there a motion to hold the hearing until such time as the National Grid individual does come on the line?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a temporary, I'll make a motion to hold it till a representative comes onto the line or till the end of the meeting where a second motion may be required.
Okay, that sounds good. Is there a second? Okay. No discussion. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
And Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We will hold this until such time as the gentleman comes on the line. We do have a wayfinding presentation. I'm not sure if Mr. Faverman is with us or if he was waiting till later.
No, I'm here.
Oh, okay. Good evening. How are you doing?
Good evening. It's an interesting beginning of the summer.
Well, New England weather is always known for its unpredictability, shall we say.
Through the chair, sorry. This is Shannon. I just, I'm also on the call to introduce the project as well. I just wanted to let you know I'm here too.
I was just gonna say, recognize Mr. Kazanovich to take over from here. And if you would, Mr. Kazanovich, introduce others who are on the line who can speak to this project.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Yes, I'm gonna leave the introduction up to Shannon, who will introduce our presenter tonight with some other facts relating to this ongoing project. So with that, Shannon, if you want to chime in?
Sure. Thank you to the Board of Selectmen for allowing me to have this opportunity. I'm just gonna briefly introduce the project before I turn it over to our consultant, Mark Faverman. So we applied in November 2018 for a Massachusetts Downtown Initiative Grant through the Department of Housing and Community Development for the creation of wayfinding and branding elements for primarily the Drury Square area, but they can be incorporated throughout the town at a later time as well. We were awarded $15,000 in February of 2019 and met our consultant, Mark Faverman, soon thereafter. We recreated a committee consisting of Town Manager Julie Jacobson, Board of Selectmen Chair Dan Carpenter, Town Planner Adam Menard, Library Director Gene Collins, Staff Assistant and Town Resident Rachel Pressey, Ken Ethea from the Historical Commission and Town Resident Jeff Mitchell, Previous Stewer Superintendent and Town Resident, and myself. And I'm Economic Development Coordinator here in Auburn. We met five times with our last meeting taking place prior to the COVID-19 shutdown on February 24, 2020. So basically, this grant will complement the Auburn Street Reconstruction Project and the other numerous planning and economic development initiatives in Drury Square. And I'd just like to thank the committee for their time and hard work and thank Mark for his guidance and hard work as well. And through the chair, if it's okay, I would like to turn it over to Mark Faverman to present the actual final product.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you very much, Shannon. The committee was very, very enthusiastic and worked very hard, as Shannon said, to come up with something that represented Auburn in a very fine way. This grant is very competitive around the state. It's one of the hottest efforts that goes into making proposals. So for Auburn to win it is quite, quite something. The first slide is supposed to be up. Shannon, do you, are you there?
Yes, I believe Mike Marino is controlling the slideshow, I believe.
Okay.
I don't see it yet.
No, I don't have anything.
Could you make me presenter by any chance?
There you go. You should have a presenter now.
Great, thank you. So I'm, there we go.
Very good. And Shannon, you can, you can drop in at any time to add. We went through a number of efforts to try to come up with the image that we thought was a strong brand-type image for not only wayfinding and signage, but perhaps for the website and for, for other social media of the town. At the bottom, there is an eagle in flight, which is relates to memorial eagle in front of the town hall as well. And the tree in the background represents something that I noticed as an outsider, that Auburn is a very green town with many plantings and trees all around. So it relates to the town hall structure, it relates, which is historical and it's a real presence, it relates to the green nature of the town. And then, next slide, please.
Is it the Auburn leaves one?
Yes.
Right here, okay.
Next. Yes. This was an alternative that was looked at relating to the plantings. And at the bottom, I don't know if you can see it very well, but you might be able to. There's a slogan or tagline that can or, or will or will not be used at various times. And that was come up with by several people embracing the past and launching into the future, which of course relates to, to the rocket treaty as well. So I think it's a, it's a very nice phrase. Many towns have these slogans, but quite a few towns do not have anything. But this one sort of developed naturally. Next slide.
Sure.
This is another variation with in terms of color and use of the leaves. The same slogan is used. And the next slide, please.
Shannon. For some reason, it's not showing up. It's just taking a moment.
All right, well, so we can look at this. The, we looked at, as a committee, a map of Auburn. And we looked at locations that could be implemented in a phased way. Drury Square could be the first phase, and then other elements could be placed around the town. And if you scroll up or scroll down, Shannon, you can see some of the other sections.
I'm trying to scroll down, but it's just lagging, I believe.
Well, let me, let me tell the board that this was an activity done by the committee. And as people who lived and worked in Auburn, they felt these were where placements should go. The slide that we are missing, and hopefully we'll come back and we'll send you a copy of it. I will email you a copy if it doesn't come out, is a family of elements. And it shows different, a different hierarchy of elements for wayfinding. Everything from, yeah, there it is, from entrance signs or gateway signs to directional signs to, to parking and trailways and signs. So this is a, a family of elements. These elements were then placed on the map by the committee and agreed to. And so we have a full package to show you. So if we can skip down a couple more. I have developed a cost estimate for all the elements as well, which we will also make available to you if it hasn't been already. And that will allow you to, you know, figure out budgets and costs and things that you want to spend money on this year or you want to put off into the future. So that's basically what we did. The discussions were, as I said, animated, and we learned a lot about the history of Auburn. And we learned about different viewpoints from different perspectives of people who had different roles in the community. And I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you and Mr. Faverman for that. Are there any, anything further you want to add, Shannon, before we go to board questions?
Sure. Just the final thing that I'll add is just part of the grant. The only requirement is we just have to implement at least one signage element within a year. So it's not, you don't have to put all the signages in at once. It can be a phased approach. We just have to at least put one. So I just wanted to mention that as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any board comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay. Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you. So first of all, I'd like to comment on the makeup of the board. Very impressive makeup of the board. I think you had a great mix of committee members who brought different things to, to the table. So, and I thank you, Mr. Carpenter, for being the representative of the Board of Selectmen. Great signage. I travel central Mass a lot and see all these towns that have signage. And I've always hoped that we would have similar signage, and it looks like it's coming to fruition. So I thank them for the, for their work on this. This has been, it's been a lot of work, several years, and I think all involved. So I fully am excited about the project and support this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Is, is there any other board comments? Hearing none. So Shannon, or Ed, or Mr. Faverman, whoever, what is, what is expected of us tonight? This is a presentation just to inform us of when would a decision have to be made? Is the board making the decision or is the administration making the decision?
From what I understand, in Massachusetts, members of the board are by right a street commissioners and sidewalk commissioners. So you need to make the approval of it. Now, whether you want to do it tonight or at a future meeting, that's fine. But, but we would love to have you approve this so that we can then make a report, a final report to the state, which will then be published on the Department of Housing and Community Development website. And we'll be open for other communities to see our process and how we got to where we got to.
Okay, thank you. I am not prepared to make a vote tonight. I appreciate great presentation, and I think we have a lot of excellent options. So thank you so much for putting this together, Shannon, and Mr. Braverman and the committee. I don't know if board members have anything final?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Berthium.
I'd just like to concur with you in not making a vote tonight. I certainly love the designs that, that have been presented tonight. And being that this could be the, the first time that some Auburn residents are seeing it, I assume that it will, if it hasn't already gotten put up on the Auburn Town website, it will be put up on the Auburn Town website for people to go in and hopefully be able to zoom in and, and look at it a little bit closer. But that way, they can give a little bit of feedback. I certainly, personally, if I had to vote on it tonight, I would have no problem voting to approve it. But I, I would like to not vote tonight and give the citizens of the town a little bit of a chance to, to review and, and give any kind of feedback. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kazanovich, I haven't been on the website today. Has anything been added for public viewing at all of the report?
Mr. Chairman, thanks. Just a few comments. I, I don't know about the, the website and the availability of those residents to take a look at this presentation tonight. But with terms of decision-making, given our former government, I believe that rests with that chief executive officer, that would be our town manager. Certainly, it would be nice to get the board to vote to support this. And certainly, I think it gives us time to have some discussions about potentially rolling the Auburn Reconstruction Project, Auburn Street, and whether or not some of these wayfinding signs, especially in the Drury Square area, can be folded into that authorization in those grand dollars that have been earmarked for that major project. So I think in the coming weeks, we can step back. We can have some discussions with Shannon and company and make a determination whether or not we can at least phase this in under the Auburn Street Project, which is scheduled to be in the next year.
Through the chair, if I could. This is Shannon.
Sure.
Thank you. So like Ed said, it would be great to have the Board of Selectmen have vote to approve whenever you guys are ready. I just wanted to mention that it is online. It was part of the agenda materials for tonight. So all, each slide is listed separately. So anyone can see the previous drafts of the signage and the one that we decided, the family of elements, the map, and the cost breakdown. So that's all available on Auburn Guide right now.
Thank you, Shannon. If, if the public has a comment, would you prefer that they contact you as you're coordinating this or have you gotten a feedback from the public at all?
Yeah, that would be perfect. If, if people could reach out to me, that would be great. You can either email me or call, whatever is easiest. And the number here, I'll just give my number in case if anyone wants to give a call. It's 508-832-7704.
Okay, thank you. Any last comments from board members, staff, or Mr. Braverman? Hearing none. Okay. Thank everybody for the hard work on this. I think it looks great. I agree with Mr. Berthium. It's, you know, I like several of the designs. But it'll be good to get some feedback from the public. And thank you, Shannon, for coordinating all of this. And we'll have it on a future agenda once some feedback is received.
Great. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
You too.
I do know that we have the hearing, so I'm not sure if we have anyone from National Grid calling in for the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, we tried to, Billy Coyle attempted to get ahold of Mr. Sucey. He left a message on his, his cell phone. I don't know if he believes the meeting is starting at seven, or maybe he got tied up on another matter. But we are hoping he'll respond to that voicemail message. If so, we will let you know as the meeting progresses. But right now, no one is available for, for that hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kazanovich. Speaking of Mr. Coyle, I do see under Town Manager items, the Auburn Street Reconstruction Project. Would someone make a motion to move up item 5B, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich. Okay, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right, we're on item 5B. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Kazanovich and to give us some background and.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know late this morning, some additional material was sent to each board member regarding tonight's agenda item. This has to do with permanent takings for the Auburn Street Reconstruction Project. I think there's a total of 15 parcels, and Mr. Coyle is with us tonight to counter, get into some of the details and the vote that's required of you based upon the opinion of Town Council. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Coyle.
Okay.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Also in attendance this evening is Greg Russell of VHB, the design consultant for the project. So as I'm sure many of you are aware of the Auburn Street Reconstruction Project, which starts at Walsh Avenue and continues to just beyond Brotherton Way, just short of Central Square. The project's been ongoing for design for several years now. And we're finally getting to the end stages of being able to advertise this project. Just briefly, as you may be aware, the project entails reconstructing the majority of Auburn Street from Central Square to Route 12, includes milling and overlaying and widening from Route 12 to Walsh Ave, includes new sidewalks, cement concrete sidewalks, brick feature strips, ornamental street lighting, landscaping amenities, and overall improvements to the traffic pattern throughout the project limits. The project is currently estimated at $4.8 million. And that is 80% federally funded and 20% state funds. And the town's portion, or in addition to that, the town's portion is 769,000 of non-participating items, mainly consisting of the ornamental street lighting and other landscape features. If you recall, we held a special town meeting back in January for the town meeting members to give the Board of Selectmen the authority to execute the temporary and permanent easements that are needed for the, for the project. So we are at that point. We've gone through an extensive review process through the state, throughout the, the design process, between a 25%, 75%, 100% review, and a very extensive review process for the right-of-way easements. I sent out notifications to all the abuddies back, I believe it was in December, to the affected property owners, just letting them know that their property was involved in this project, and the town would need temporary and permanent easements. There's a very strict process the federal government requires because 80% of the project is funded by the federal government. And we follow those guidelines. And we've also had some, some benefit of having Mass DOT, Shirley Shiver, the right-of-way agent, work alongside of us as well to guide us through this process along with Attorney Henigan. So recently, we sent out offer letters to all the abuddies, the affected property owners, rather, indicating the total cost of the temporary easements or value in permanent easements. And in every step of the way, they have given the opportunity to contact myself or our appraisals or our title examiners that have also been involved in this project. So at, at this point, we are now before the Board of Selectmen to request that the, the board approve the order of takings. Hopefully, that happens this evening. When that does happen, the next step would be to record the layout plans, which show the easements, both temporary, permanent, and then record the order of takings. Then a letter notifying the abuddies of the takings will be sent out within 60 days, probably much sooner than that, advising the affected property owners and their mortgagees of the takings and then arrange for a means for which they can then receive their check for the damages. So as, as Mr. Kazanovich has mentioned, we have 15 affected property owners, and many of them have temporary and permanent easements. Majority of them are all what we call sliver takings. They're not significant takings and easements in order to, for, for grading purposes for driveway work and sideways work, sidewalk work, rather. So the project is scheduled for advertising for construction this summer. Once we complete this process, this is probably the final process other than getting the final package wrapped up and sent into Mass DOT and getting their final sign-off along with Federal Highway Administration and advertise this summer with notice to proceed. Once a contractor, a little bidder, is awarded, notice to proceed later this fall. Potentially, some utility work might be completed before winter. But we would expect the vast majority of the work to begin next spring and to be substantially complete by the end of '21, 2021. And we continue into the spring of 2022 for some final work and punch list items. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. And also, as I mentioned, Greg Russell for VHB is available as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Are there any board comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a brief comment.
Okay, Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Coyle. You know, through this entire project, you've kept the board up to date each step of the way, from the initial design to being moved up on the list for funding. It's an exciting project. I appreciate the work, everything, everyone that's put into this. And I fully support the motion that you requested tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich. Is there any further board comment? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich?
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to adopt the order of taking as presented by the Director of Public Works for the Auburn Street Reconstruction Project.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for everything, everyone associated with the project and for making time to join us this evening. And we hope you have a good rest of the night.
Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, so we are back to the agenda. Board of Selectmen items, which are two drain layer licenses. They have, the first would be for Alexander Construction. They have been licensed within the last five years. Do board members have any questions or comments? Or is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
And Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is, license is granted. We have a second one, which is for Westcott Custom Homes. Do board members have any questions, comments, or is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay. Moving right along. We have a discussion and potential vote on a summer meeting. Do board members want to take the Town Manager item 5C about the CARES Act? I'm not, I know Mr. Kazanovic can speak to this, but I'm not sure if anybody else is on who would like to speak on it. So is there a motion to move up item 5C?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay. Motion, second. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We are on item 5C. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Kazanovic for any comments he may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We wanted to inform the board that effective Friday, June 12th, was an extended deadline for the filing of application number one on the CARES Act. The CARES Act provided $150 million to the state of Massachusetts. Our allocation was about 1.46 mil to be filed over a period that consists of two applications. Our application number one, we filed a total CARES Act amount of $244,524.92. In conjunction with that, we are preparing to file, money's available under FEMA. All of our PPE will be filed under FEMA at a 75% reimbursement rate, if approved. The additional 25 that typically comes from MEMA would be, would come to us by way of the CARES Act. So, application number one, although you could, you could combine the two applications and request 1.46 and change. Our application was $244,000. They suggested that you take roughly 50% of that, or 700,000. Even though we didn't apply for the full 50%, we can still apply for it in round two, which is probably going to be filed sometime this fall. We are hoping under the CARES Act that the federal government will allow us to use whatever we don't apply for as an offset to revenue loss. And certainly, there's a lot of discussion about that. I'm sure that's something that the federal government is going to take up within the coming weeks, and hopefully, we'll get some good news that will allow us to offset some of what we know we're going to lose in revenue, not only for this year, but for next year as well. So we just wanted to inform the board, no, no FEMA vote is due at this time. It's like snow and ice. It doesn't require a vote of the board, although we're asking the board to vote to apply for and accept any CARES money that may be eligible under the application number one process that we just filed.
Okay. Are there board member questions? If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to apply for and accept the CARES Act grant funds fiscal year 20 COVID-19 expenditures.
Second that.
There's a motion. Okay. We have a motion, a second. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Okay. Going back to Board of Selectmen item 4C, we have discussion and potential vote of a summer meeting schedule. I know we've all been on the board for a while. We usually restrict our meetings in July and August to one unless there's pressing business. Our next meeting is July 13th, so that would fall somewhere in the middle of the month, which is usually what we seek. Are people interested in following past custom, subject to the call of the chair?
Mr. Chairman, I fully support a lighter schedule in the summer. We don't have much on the agenda, no sense meeting just to meet. And as we did last week with the special meeting to proactively take action on the extension of premises, we can always do that.
Okay. So do we want to meet on July 13th? That's regularly, our first regularly scheduled meeting in July, and then we can figure out something in it.
Mr. Chair, I'm in favor, and I'll go ahead and make a motion to have one meeting in July, being on our regularly scheduled first meeting date of July 13th, with the stipulation that if a second meeting is needed, that we'll go ahead and schedule that at a later date. Otherwise, we'll just stick with the one meeting in July.
Okay.
I'll second that.
A motion? Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right. August, our first meeting would typically be August 10th. I don't know if you want to push it off to the 17th, so it's in the middle of the month to catch as much, or if you want to do just like we did with July.
Mr. Chair, I would say that being the July meeting being the 13th, that we should, and I'll go ahead and make the motion, that we have a single meeting in August, being on the first meeting, scheduled meeting date of August 10th. That'll give almost a full month from July meeting. So schedule it for August 10th, and same thing will, if a special or a second meeting is required, we can schedule it at that time.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. I don't think there's any more discussion, so I'm just going to say, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
And Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right. Thank you. Our next item is gift acceptances. These are all for the fire department. We did get three additional gifts in this afternoon. I don't know if members had a chance to take a look at those. I did quickly write down in case there aren't. So we have a 201 from Lawrence Fitz for the Fire Department Gift Fund. We have a gift for the Fire Department Gift Fund from Scott Holland for $50. We have a $25 gift for the Fire Department Gift Fund from Judith Nalsey or Nalsey. And then we have three in memory of Richard Hastings, a $30 one from Lisa Lavoy, a $50 one from Elizabeth and Deb Berthew, and a $100 one from William Sanborn. And we thank them for, family for considering or designating a town fund. Is there a motion to accept those with gratitude?
Motion to accept gratitude.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay. We're just singing right along. Good. That does it for Board of Selectmen items. We have wayfinding presentation under the Town Manager items. Is there anything further, Mr. Kazanovic, for the wayfinding presentation?
Mr. Chairman, no. No additional comments or no additional presentation.
Okay. Thank you. I guess we'll ask one last time about National Grid. Has Mr. Susie been able to join us? Not hearing him.
Chairman, I did, Mr. Chairman, I did reach out to him, but he hasn't gotten back to me.
Okay. Thank you for doing that. I think the best thing we can do is.
Chairman, can I ask, while we move on?
Yes, please, Mrs. Goodrich.
So through you to Mr. Kazanovic. I know a lot of the times, these petitions are in residential areas, and abudders participate in these hearings because they're concerned with pole placement near their property. This isn't on a commercial area. So I have three questions for you. We have it in our packet, but I'll confirm that abudders were notified with you. Do you know if this is time sensitive? And because it's just in a commercial area, and if, assuming there are no abudders here, do you see any issue with us moving forward to approve this?
Through the chair to, to Mrs. Goodrich. To the best of my knowledge, I don't believe this is time sensitive. I would be concerned about any potential abudders that may experience any disruptions and interruption to the operations of their business. I know no one has joined us with respect to notification. But I would be concerned, and I wish we had a National Grid rep here, how long this process is going to take? Are there any anticipated disruptions to a service? And if so, how does that impact any of the commercial, the commercial businesses and our industrial businesses in the area?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing those questions. I don't know if any other board members have any comments, but I would make a motion to continue this hearing to the next, our next meeting. That's 7:00 PM.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We're meeting at 5:00 now. So I'll make a motion to continue the hearing to our next meeting as the first public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay. Did you, okay. Do you have something, Mr. Berthew?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I am noticing that there, there are three public boxes on our grid here. So my question is, is there anybody from the public that has any questions on this that might not be available at the next meeting?
Okay. Are there any abudders or interested parties present for the hearing?
Thank you.
Hearing none. You're welcome. All right. So there's a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
And Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is continued to the next meeting. The only other item we have is minutes from May 11th. Does anyone have any corrections or omissions to these minutes? Hearing none. The chair will accept them as submitted, with our thanks. Are there any final board member comments? Anything final from Mr. Kazanovic? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion? Hold on. Go ahead.
Sorry. Since we're meeting on the 13th, I just want to wish you all a happy Fourth, if I don't have an opportunity to see you.
Oh, thank you. You as well, and a happy belated Father's Day to you and Lionel, and anyone listening who joined us tonight.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion. All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We stand in adjournment. Everybody have a great rest of the month, and Happy Fourth.